Good evening. This is Tuesday, April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will wind up as a TikTok video. That will be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board, for me to confirm that all members on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Present.
Carol McDonald.
Present.
Thomas Andrew.
Present.
Yeah, excellent. You can hear me and Tom Sanford. With the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M Tuesday, April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the out due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly physically accessible location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly so you eh to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to encourage our engagement conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting we had in on April eleventh.
So moved.
Any second. And we got a motion in a second. Any discussion about those minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Uh Jay Teach.
Hi.
Carol McDonald.
Hi.
Thomas Andrew.
Abstained because I was not present in the meeting.
Excellent. And Tom Sanford, I motion carries. Um, okay, that takes care of that. We have a bill that Tim had forwarded to me for consideration. This is for the Village Strategic Plan Part Two Hundred Percent Completion done by C M R P C for the amount of three thousand dollars. Did you, you guys got a copy of it too? I think emailed.
I think he, yeah, he sent it to everyone. Um, I will make a motion to pay the bill to Central Mass Regional Planning.
Seconds.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay for the pay the bill. It's three thousand dollars. Uh, it's the final uh for the Village Strategic Plan Hundred Percent Complete. Uh Phase Two Plan Phase Two, Part Two, whatever they're calling it. The invoice is uh five, two, three, five dated three thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of three thousand dollars. Any further discussion about this? Uh, okay, I will ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Right.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, I motion carries unanimous to pay this. Thank you. I think that's it for bills and anything else. And Jay, you burn out of town, so you don't have anything from mail or anything like that, right?
Uh, no, I've been checking the electronic mailbox, but not the paper one.
Right. So there's really nothing there.
Uh, no.
Okay.
But do you have, you have the agenda that I posted, right?
I do have the agenda. So our first item is at seven forty-five. This is just the uh administration part and pay bills and open the meeting we're having. Uh, we did have, I, I, I emailed you, Jay, I didn't email the rest of them. We had um Kathy Adams asked us to uh consider her. I said that we had a full agenda and only a part of our group were gonna be joining, so I asked her to uh postpone until our next meeting and she would like to be on the agenda for that.
Right. Yeah, I got an email from her. I responded, but it was, she didn't contact me till Monday and the agenda has to be frozen Fridays.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not gonna work.
Right, right. Okay, not a problem. Um.
And I've been doing a little bit of homework on the um see if there's any kind of benchmarks for parking spaces for various buildings, but I haven't gotten, I should get a response in the next week or two, but I haven't gotten it yet.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to too, too much talking about it because we told her to wait till next time, so it's really not fair to have a conversation without them being uh at least present, so.
I would just say that I think it's beneficial because we can uh do a little more homework on the evolution of the benchmarks. So I think it's all for the good.
I agree. Okay. Alrighty, um, so do we wanna take, well, we have, we posted it for seven forty-five, we probably should wait a few seconds. The A N R Carter Street.
Um, I don't know if anybody's coming for that. I just thought we'd get an update from Carolyn.
About.
Well, there was a proposed A N R. Which, yeah, me too, Carter Street.
Oh, for seventy-two Carter Street. I thought you were talking about a hundred Carter Street, cuz that's a thing that's going on also. Uh, seventy-two Carter Street, um the, the, right. The A N R, I thought you had taken that off the agenda. I didn't send that message early enough.
We wouldn't, I figured we wouldn't really discuss it cuz there's nothing to talk about until after the town meeting, but I thought we'd just note.
Right. Okay, um, so um we sent the plan and the warrant to the property owner. You know, cuz they should know. And um their lawyer requested that we don't vote on dividing the land until after town meeting approval of the purchase of the six and a half acres. Which makes sense. Um, so.
That's a warrant article?
Correct. It well, to spend CPA money on it, it's a warrant article.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I didn't know if it was a separate article. So it's all part of the CPA.
Each, eh each CPA request is a separate article.
Is it? Okay.
So, yeah. Yep. So that is why we are not uh gonna talk about it tonight.
Right, we'll learn about it next week.
Correct. Hopefully, after a positive vote.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Who's gonna present it to the town?
That would be me.
Is, oh, because of uh CPA.
Because it's gonna, yeah, because it's gonna, right, me as the representative of um CPA Conservation on CPA Committee.
Yeah, and what's your, if you had to say, here's the top three reasons why we should buy this, um, what are they?
Um scenic value of the town. Um, it gives us land that the town owns in the center of town to put a well on. Um, should the center of town need, need water, which my understanding is that that's an issue. Uh, and um it can connect to other trails and provides downtown recreation area.
Wonder whether um we should have an opinion from someone from a well person that, or or s- someone who could weigh in on whether it is a practical place to put a well.
You put a well anywhere.
Well, not if, not if it's a twenty percent grade and solid rock, you gotta get the equipment up. And I haven't walked there, but I was looking at the contour lines. It's pretty steep, right?
Yeah, it is.
Eh especially at the top, but over by Carter Street where the easement is. Uh, I mean, the easement on the house property is, is like bad, you know, it's very small, but that, that side of the property is not at quite as steep.
Hmm.
Especially towards the back.
Jay, I think, I think it's a great question because I've been um I constantly remember the uh South Common where somebody purchased where somebody can come out of left field with a question, and I think that perhaps in preparation for that we should just, we should just draw the reserve areas and say, you know, um, any, any, you know, you, you could drill a well anywhere if the necessity is strong and, and it's worth it, but I do think it's worthwhile, at least um, being prepared to say there are a number of reserve areas. There are obviously technical areas with the property, but it is very definitely a reserve area and the only one in the center of town.
Right.
I was thinking maybe you could get Mike Sullivan or, or, or uh, what's his name, um, the other guy that drills well to just come by and look at it and
If, if they could, that'd be great.
It'd be kind of embarrassing if that was one of the top reasons to buy the land and it turned out you just couldn't drill there for some reason.
Yeah, and, and, and I think more to the point, if somebody raised it on the, the, the town meeting floor and we didn't have a ready answer.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Someone may know.
Really more to the point that uh.
Someone may know it can't be, it can't be used for a while and you don't wanna get caught.
Yeah, um.
At a town meeting.
So JD, I, do you, I mean, I know them, they've done a little bit of work on our house. Do you know them reasonably well? Any?
Uh, I've been, I've been a lot of work with Mike. Um.
Do you wanna ask him to do that? Because you'd probably have a lot more weight than the rest of us, not, not to put something on your plate, but.
Yeah, I could do that, yep.
Okay, that would be, that would be awesome. I, I'm, especially since you're out of the state. Um, I'd be happy to meet him up there this weekend or sometime, um.
I'm gonna be back um Thursday night, tired but back.
Okay.
That'll be good for Monday. Oh, the town.
The town meeting is next Monday.
Right.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't give you much time.
Um, I'll try, let's see, now, somebody does have to be there to show them where the.
Well, and for him to have someone to say yes here, no there, too.
Yeah. Um, well, maybe I'll try to get him to do it on Friday when I'm there. I don't know, let me, let me call him and find out.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I'm determined, it's another guy, there's basically two people that drilled wells in town. I am drawing a blank on the other guy's name, but he would
Yeah.
Probably help out.
Well, that'd be great.
Yes, for sure.
And a great conversation because that way we don't get caught on the town meeting floor.
Unawares, yeah.
Right, and then your third argument, which was about trails. So I was looking, I sent you guys um a map off the M S G I S, right? And in order to, I mean, it would be kind of cool to have a trail there connecting Carter to close to the downtown. But it seems like the only place you can get in from this new easement. The only way to get off is going a- across a piece of land, a fairly large piece of land that's owned by some individual.
Correct, at the moment, I where, you know, if this is successful the Conservation Commission is planning on approaching them for a recreation easement of some sort.
Okay.
Um, so that we can, eh, so that we can access Powder House, the Powder House, which the town does own.
Yep, right, and, and that's, that's of historical interest. Um, and I think, again, the point of it, if it comes out on the town meeting floor is to say, we, you know, we don't necessarily have all the pieces in place, but if this piece goes away, none of it can happen.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Exactly, and not, it, it, and just tap back to the trails for a second. Now, I'm not, eh, when I say trails, it's really trail. You know, it's, it's, it's not a big enough piece of property to have multiple trails and it would be probably on the, uh, the um, west side, west street side of the property, you know, not right behind the houses on Woodward.
Yep, I would, I would, I would characterize it as access to conservation land in the center of town rather than trails because it is gonna be sort of a trail to nowhere except maybe Powder House when we have all the pieces in place.
Exactly.
Well, but if, if you got the, eh, if you got an easement on the other property, you would have a way to get people coming from the new Highland Street development through the trail that they were supposed to have provided, right? And then you go across Carter Street, you get on this and it'd have to go but you'd go around, around the hill and come back on the other side and you'd be able to walk to the center.
Yep.
Yep, yep. And that, that trail has been provided. I actually was out there last Sunday, not Sunday the other day, the weekend before working on creating, yeah, or more clearly defining that some of the trails out there.
This is between the development and Carter Street, you mean?
No, at Highland Ridge.
Hmm.
What development are?
Eh, right, no, I'm, but it's the um is it truly working on going from Highland Ridge to Carter Street or to?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think another point that could be raised is that, um this is another piece in creating, you know, a pedestrian infrastructure trail or otherwise within the town and within the road network. Um we've, we've talked about the idea that um perhaps the best access from the center of town to south Berlin from pedestrian point of view might be off the roads entirely. We, we could talk about it.
Right.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. And then your first point about the scenic value, have you got anything to show up to demonstrate that or? I mean, what's, it's what are you gonna see? Cuz there's, uh, the house is still gonna be there.
Well, if, if someone other than us buys that property theoretically um, two houses could, at least two houses, the, the pro- uh, a plan for two additional houses up there has been approved by the planning board.
Hmm.
Um, so in, you know, if houses go up in there, they're gonna cut down all the trees.
Okay.
Yep, and um on a lighter note, I could say that um in nineteen eighty-six, when Joni and I lived next to the cemetery in town here um, we went out in the early morning and climbed that hill and from that point we were able to see Haley's Comet just above the horizon, so there's a great view from there, you know? If, if somebody really, really hammers on that, I'll jump up and say that.
Um.
So we need to get it done before the next comet? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That would be good.
Not necessarily Haley's Comet, though, just any comet.
It would be really good if we got it done before the next appearance of Haley's Comet, yes.
Right.
That sounds good.
All right, any other questions? Jay, anything else on your mind about the property?
Um, so when did we approve the two lot subdivision?
Um.
Was that the one that?
Tim has the plan.
Black came before us.
I don't know, it was Ducharme and Dillis at the time. That's one of the reasons they were so able to so easily pull up the plan and cuz they had the digital file. Um.
I, I, I recall that was posed by either, I think Chuck Black or, I think it was Chuck Black, um, and it was.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
He'd be one of the usual suspects, yes.
Yeah, and he came before us and uh it was a subdivision. I thought it was I thought it was three lots actually, but maybe it was just the two and then.
I think it was two additional lots.
Two, two additional and they were gonna knock down those, okay. Um, and they stuck us with the uh, the bill for um um Haley and Wood to doing the uh pre-con work for engineering.
Huh.
For like twenty-five hundred bucks. And it took me like a year and a half to pay them off at like five hundred dollars a shot because we didn't have enough budget to pay them.
Wow.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'm surprised we got that far to approve the subdivision to, eh, not the subdivision, but the division of the land.
Well, we, we ought to really can, I know Tim is away, but we ought to really confirm that before the town meeting because we don't wanna
Say that.
Right, right, so the, the plan definitely exists. I, and now in thinking about it, I may have misspoked by saying that you guys approved it.
Yeah.
Because it hasn't been divided.
Right, okay, then it hap- then we didn't approve it.
So it was.
Presented to the town.
It had been presented, correct.
Presented to us, yes.
Yeah.
And and you have a copy of that?
Tim does, yep, and he will be back in time for town meeting.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
But we, we just need to nail that one down because again, I um I've been burned before on town meeting as we all have.
No, I, I, yeah, exactly.
They're done that.
Yeah.
We can have the T-shirt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could have a support group with the people that are.
Yeah.
So that um predates me cuz I've been through all the minutes since I've been taken and there's nothing that says seventy-two Carter.
Oh, no, no, this is probably ten years ago.
Okay.
Yep. Um, but I have seen with my own eyeballs the plan, so it does exist and.
Well, we could say.
All right.
There is subdivision road or how do you, there's not that much um frontage, right?
No, it was a, they were putting a road in.
Okay.
And it was a funky configuration of how they got the lots to work. If I recall.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz even the um, the setback, it looks like from what I was seeing, the setbacks aren't, even then, they need variances on, I mean, it's tiny.
We get a reduced, we get a reduced frontage on a, on a cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay. But even this A N R division, eh, it's not totally conforming, I don't think. From looking at the drawing.
No.
Frontage is short and then about six.
But if you, if you stuck the existing lot on the end or edge of the, or the frontage was on that new road that you created you might be able to get it.
All right. Yep.
Yep.
And I think that's what they were planning on doing. So they have a lot and then they have.
Allow a subdivision though for this, for the proposal that we got right now. It's gonna create, the house lot's gonna be slightly non-conforming, I believe.
The house, it's the other part that's short, right, Carolyn?
The frontage is short by about nine feet.
Is it nine feet? Okay.
Eh, it's something like that. It's, it's definitely pretty minimal. I'm looking to see if I can find the plan from Tim.
Well, it sounds like it's close enough for government work to say that a creditable subdivision plan has been presented.
Right, yep, and if the division gets approved for the lot uh, it will not be any more non-conforming than it currently is.
Hmm, yeah, so I think, you know, bottom line if we need to include this, it, it is um that this is a, you know, this is a real issue because we have a creditable proposal for a subdivision plan.
Right.
Right, and you also can say that this, you know, the, the, yes, it is a non-conforming lot, however, it does not increase the non-conformity and benefit to, is it overall benefit to the town?
Agreed, yep.
So, I mean, we've done other things that have benefited the town that have you know, had us compromise on, on, on stuff, so. All right, um, I think we, I wanna, um, I wanna move on if you don't mind because
Yeah, please.
Anything and um it's eight o'clock and we have Emily should be available.
She is.
And you promote her, please.
I certainly can.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
Hi, everyone. I'm doing well. How are you?
Excellent.
Hey.
Going well.
Um, so I just have a quick update kinda tonight. Um see, I had sent out and updated um version of the goals and strategies for the housing production plan and the master plan housing chapter. Um, I don't know if anyone got a chance to, to open that up and take a peek at it, but
Did.
Um, excellent. Um, so essentially I was just um updating the existing goals that we decided we wanted to keep and then I added in a few suggested ones. So I think I just maybe wanna go through those and um just get some input on, on, on those suggested ones.
Okay.
Um, let's see. So the first one I included in there was um one point three, identify and leverage resources to advance housing production and programs. Um, so this is essentially just a recommendation to um specifically for seeking out funding and technical assistance. It's good to have this kind of goal in there um as it helps kinda support future applications for funding, um, and then it just laid out a few different um funding sources like housing choice. You're currently a housing choice community, but just continuing to apply for that program as it's benefited the town in the past. Um, and then D L T A, which you apply for through C M R P C. Uh, Community One Stop for Growth is a state program as along with um E E A planning grants. Um, so just kinda calling that out, so. Any thoughts on that one?
No, I think it's a good idea to have that in there, especially if it allows us access to future funding.
Right, agreed.
Agreed.
Um, so I'll just move forward. The next one that I included, I think it was two point two, was Consider Cottage Housing Communities Bylaw. Um, I think this one replaced the previous goal that was um discussing pursuing uh, or amending the O S R D bylaw. Um, so right now the town's actually participating in a, a D L T A project that I'll be leading. Um where we're gonna look into some model bylaws, hopefully talk to maybe some developers who have done this in the past, find out um some success stories. Um, so the town could kinda move forward with that.
Again, it's, we need it.
Yep.
Yeah, and in the survey and in the um, the workshop, that kind of housing style seemed to be really popular with people, so um, that would be great if the, the town could implement that, implement that into the zoning.
I think it's possible. Um, I think the will is, the planning board has the will to do it, and I think you got the support from the, from the surveys, so I don't think that's a big stretch for us to work on something like this. Work on something like this.
Definitely. Great, there's no comments in that. The next one was two point three. Um, I think this was something that was called out in the master plan, but it wasn't in the housing production plan, but I usually included in housing production plans. Prepare design guidelines or standards for new multifamily housing developments. Um, so some communities, um, have included design guidelines as part of their bylaws to ensure. New development is is really like complimentary to the town's character. Um, I included a link to Marlborough's, um, design guidelines for new multifamily housing. I really like how they structured theirs. Um, so feel free to take a look at that and maybe that's something in the future the town wants to create its own kind of document.
So this would be part of the, would we change the? The existing, the existing language we have to mirror this new. Uh, standard you're creating in this part of the bylaw, I mean, this part of the, this is what housing production. Our strategies, yeah, so we mirror one another, but we're going to change the existing. Or enhance.
You don't have existing design guidelines, do you, or do?
I don't think we do.
Okay, um, so it kind of be a document.
Hold on, back up. This is, this is for like, um, apartment buildings or dense. Pieces, so it would be an overlay anyways, right? We would, we would be able to have a bite at the apple. Uh, to to, you know, request guidance or guidelines.
Yeah, exactly.
As part of our dialogue back and forth, we don't have, we don't have to worry about, it's not for like a a multifamily sub. Not multifamily, but a multi lot subdivision because we wouldn't have any say on that anyways.
Yeah, it's I've really only seen it for like multifamily, like apartments, condos.
Yeah, okay, alright, yeah, so which would have, we'd have, we'd have to, they'd have to do it all the way anyways.
Yes, yeah.
We would have, okay, alright. Have the language mirror one another. Okay.
Let's see, the next one that I had included was two point four. Um, explore financing assistance programs to support first time home buyers and low income households. Um, so this really is saying now that you have like CPA funds and the housing trust. You should, it's recommending that you explore different, um, programs that are out there that. Um, they're not necessarily building new development, but it's providing ways like through subsidies that low income family. That would allow low income families to live here, so I listed a few examples. Um, like rentalist, direct rental assistance, um, and these are all things that are allowed through CPA. Yeah, down payment closing cost assistance program, um, there's a bunch of communities in Massachusetts that have set up something like that. Um, a buy down program, so really I I wanted to emphasize the the word explore in this. Recommendation, so it just seeing what is out there and what could work for the town. That you do have this this funding available to to create something like this.
Okay, but you're not advocating that we start a fund. From CPA money to create a program or anything like that, right?
Yeah, it's not directly recommending that you do, it's just exploring the the opportunities that are out there.
Okay, so do you happen to know if you had a sort of a program like this, is there any other? Uh, other funds, state funds or federal funds that would be like a match or anything like that or possibilities for?
That's a good question, um.
When I first read it, my inclination was, no, we're not taking CPA money to do a program like this. And then I'm like, well, maybe we ought to think about that, and then if there was, I'd be more inclined to to say. This is a good idea if there was other sources of funds that were willing to match or that were willing to seed or were willing to help us. But to to create a program that we're going to be doing, you know, ourselves. We don't generate enough CPA money and there's plenty of people that want to get their claws into that, so.
Right, well, so. Housing gets ten percent of CPA money every year anyway, and. Uh, as a, as the CPA committee, we have definitely talked about. Different things that can be you, the different ways the housing portion. Of CPA money can be used, and we've definitely talked about, you know, first time buyer assistance. Really haven't talked about rental assistance so much. Um, but definitely like first time home buyer kind of. Um, to help people who, e- especially if it means being able to keep affordable units. You know, if it, if someone just needs a little help with a down payment. And so they can move it into an affordable unit, um, and helps them qualify for that. Um, that would definitely be one thing, one way CPA housing money could be used.
May I suggest that to sort of bring the things together that you add to the recommendations that. We, um, explore the possibility of matching contributory. Contributions to this.
From the state or other.
From the state or federal programs, yes.
You can add that in.
Yep. Especially now that we're, we have the housing trust, we will have a body. That can administer something like this and the consortium. That we're part of the housing consortium, they will also help administer things like, something like that.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I know like some, uh, communities who have CPA have like partnered together, so it's not just individual towns running a program like this. It's it's a kind of a regional program, so that's something to explore too.
Right, well, so that's what the the housing consortium that we are a member of.
Okay, are they all CPA?
Yep, they're all CPA and, um. Or they're all CPA towns that are involved in it. And that is one of the things they will help us maintain. Our affordable housing stock by helping buyers. Helping connect buyers with available units.
It's a great program to have.
Yeah. Tim knows more about it than I do, but I do know that much about it.
Sounds good. Okay, so I'll keep that one in there, um. I think the last one that I had for the housing production plan, um, that I added in was. Um, advocate for a higher inclusion of accessible units in proposed housing developments. Um, so it's just recognizing that the population's aging, there's probably an increased need for. More accessible housing, so just ensuring that, um, this population is considered when developing any new housing and. Advocating that, um, more accessible units are included, um, as part of proposed developments.
Yeah, not that I want to encourage it, but if we ever had another. Fifty-five and over, I think that's that's a great point for that, that kind of development.
Right.
Yeah, and ensuring they have like a variety of like bedrooms available to, like, not just. One bedroom apartments, but maybe three bedroom apartments for people who have a disability but have a family. I know that can be a struggle for that population to find appropriate housing and making sure it's affordable, not just market rate.
It's 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 a tricky one if you try to stick it in an over fifty-five though, because the makeup of that household maybe. Preclude them from being in that. But I I I agree that we should be doing something, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, and and I meant, uh, what I meant actually was that. If we have another over fifty-five, we should emphasize that a high percentage of those. Should be, um, accessible. That that's what I was saying is we should look at what what our rule is with respect to that, not not that, although it's an intriguing idea. That to add to a fifty-five and over. To add a couple of, uh, disabled as well, but but that. But that's not what I was suggesting.
Great, um, okay, so that's all I had for the. Housing production plan updates, and then I went through the the goals and strategies for the, um. Previous, uh, master plan housing chapter, um, so there were a couple in here. Um, let's see, that I wanted to either just tweak the language a little bit just to update it or, um, just add new ones. Um, so actually, I'll just start with a question, um. About kind of the structure of these, um. Since the goals, the the these two plans are made at two different times, so the goals and and strategies are a little bit different. Um, right now I kind of have have it as they all discuss the same kind of context, they hit on the same themes, but they're not, um. Using like the exact same phrasing, they don't overlap that way. Um, so do you want me to go and just restructure these goals so they're? Essentially exactly the same in the housing production plan and the housing, um, chapter. Or just essentially make sure that it's. All the themes are hit on and it's okay that the the verbiage is a little different.
I don't think it'd be a problem if the verbiage is a little different, as long as the sense of the.
As long as nothing contradicts.
Yeah, exactly, or or gets omitted, or you know, we lose one because we changed the language and it doesn't mean the same thing. I mean, we're not lawyers, we don't need to have it, you know, well, one of us is.
Yeah, it was, most of us are.
Speak for yourself, Tom.
But anyways, um, I don't think, unless Thomas, unless you can convince me differently, I mean, does it, does it have to mirror up? So it's a hundred percent?
No, I think actually, um. As is many times the case, and I'm lawyer, put it better than the lawyer, that unless there's some inherent. Conflict that would cause us to trip up later, I'm I'm really not overly concerned about. Minor definitional changes.
Yeah, as long as.
And 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 I have to say, I haven't reviewed it, so I, you know, I can't. You know, that that's a lawyerly thing to say, but I.
Just prove my point.
Yeah, so certainly if there are things that you feel are. Confusing to the ordinary person that are inconsistent. I think we'd appreciate it if you pointed that out to us. I think that's a good non-lawyerly way to say it.
Perfect.
Layman's terms. Okay, that sounds good. That makes my life easier too. Um, so let me just go through a couple that I added on the master plan. Um, the first few are kind of the same, I just changed the language. Um, like the first one, for example, mentioned river bridge, but that's complete now, so, um, I just took that out. Yeah, honestly, a lot of these I kind of just added from the housing production plans, um, just to make sure they both mention like. The the programs or or goals that were, um, suggested. So. Yeah, I think if you just, if everyone can take a little bit of time just to review that, and if you have like any edits or suggestions, just. Um, feel free to email it to me, um. My plan is for the next like three weeks or so month, um, to pull the whole. Narrative of the plan together and then email you a copy and then maybe in a a meeting in like a month or so, I could come and just kind of review. Um, and take any feedback or suggestions, um. How does that sound for for a plan?
It sounds good. We, um, just so you know, in July and August, we only have one meeting in the month.
Sounds good, so I'll aim for, um. Like end of May, if you have a meeting then.
We do.
Okay, perfect, so if I can just get on the schedule or the agenda, then, um, that would be great.
Awesome. Emily, did you email, did you get my new email? I thought I emailed you.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
Couple of months ago. Alright, I will, so I can still access that old email? I will send you an email from there with my new one. Pull that old one out, that's my old job, and, um. I have a much better chance of actually seeing the stuff you email.
Awesome, okay, I'll keep an eye out for that.
Okay.
Um, and then just like a heads up that, um. Tim probably let you know that the town got DLTA funding for a couple of projects. I'll also be heading those projects. So you're not getting rid of me anytime soon, once the housing production plan is finished. Um, I'm also going to be working on a couple of regional projects with a few other towns, um, looking at, like I mentioned, the cottage housing bylaw. Um, as well as looking into like short term rentals, um, uh. Students at Clark University are wrapping up, um, like a semester long study on that in the next couple of weeks. So, once they finish that up and kind of give us their their report, um, then I'm going to be starting up that, our kind of end of that project. So, just so you know.
Well, I'm certainly glad that this is not goodbye, but see you again.
Oh, definitely. And I, oh, one more thing, um, Carrie Salwa, who's working on the Village Center, um, strategic plan, wanted me to. Let you know that, um, it's like, it sounded like it's about ninety-nine percent complete, they've pretty much added everything into the updated, uh, story maps. Um, so that's why you got that like final bill, um. For the project, so I'm sure she'll be sending you an update pretty soon, once that's completely wrapped up.
Okay, we can tell we're ready to approve the bill.
And that's all that I have.
Emily, has there been any discussion at? CMRPC about the, um. Alternate fuel grants? We just learned about, I think we learned about them from you guys.
Yeah, it was an email from Central Mass.
That sounds awesome, that's not a discussion I've been part of, but, um, I'll find out. Who was kind of organizing that and see if I can connect you to find out some more information.
There was lots and lots of money, I'm thinking we should be putting. Blue charging station every corner of town, so people can charge up on their way in and way out.
Are you guys a green community?
Yeah.
Nice. Yeah, I'll look more into that.
Can you imagine one of third of the cars driven, they have to get charged up all the time?
I'll have to put more Dunkin' Donuts in.
Well, I I think it's a great point, Jay, and you know, maybe at the couple of the town facilities. We would have money to put in, you know, for instance, in the parking lot at the town offices and so on, some recharging stations, so. There may be some low hanging fruit.
Good point, yeah, you're right. So we have a great site right at the entrance to town that we're trying to figure out what to do with, right?
Sorry, which one is that?
You know, when you're coming into town from four ninety-five, if you ever look to the right, you probably don't look there anymore because your show uses.
No, I I remember that well, when I was threatened with a with a shotgun when I was trying to enforce. Conservation Commission restrictions there many years ago, so, um. And I thought about going back with the police and I thought. You know what?
Not worth it.
It's not worth it.
Nope.
Yeah. Larry Brant had some stories about. Mo bringing him down in the basement under one of the barns and chopping chickens' heads off while he was talking to him.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, we've all had that, yeah, so I know exactly what you're talking about, and that's an interesting idea, yeah.
Something to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, the the property would need to be zoned differently and those. The CR. But.
Yep.
This part of.
Well, it's a long skinny. It's a long skinny a lot, so. Right, it could be suitable, right, it's one of the few things that there nicely.
There's part of that where the barn is, it's not part of the CR, right?
No, where the green, where the greenhouse is.
Where the green, just where the greenhouse is, that's all.
Yeah.
And that was part of my reasoning about not going back with armed policemen and him with the shotgun already out. I was like, you know what? At some time in the future, we can address this because it's only a temporary greenhouse, you know?
Yeah, that's interesting, that might be, um. Might be, um. Something that would be, we should consider.
Yeah, because the property owner, as I remember it, um. Was sort of clueless about the development potential and, um. Is really limited to a single-family house. So I think they would be. Amenable to. You know, something that that, um. Gave them an alternate use that the town found acceptable, so I think I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a challenge because they pay a lot of money for the property and I'm not sure what the economics are around this. But the fact that there seems to be a lot of grant money, I was surprised at the amount.
No, and 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 I think, you know, my point would be that. If, um. My own sense is that if you, um, had a property that. Uh, would keep people busy and would be. A good accommodation for half an hour or an hour. It might be quite, um. It might be quite attractive to people.
Well, you do still have in the CR, right, you can still, um. They 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 still have that, well, it's probably, I don't know, was the use allowed by right for them to run their. Farm stand type of thing, or is that, okay, so you still could have a bomb stand or some sort of. Um. Component like that and a charging station on the on the the part that's not in the.
Yeah, or you or you could, you know, or you could rezone it to be, you know.
They're charging their Teslas, right?
Yeah, exactly, you know, have vegetables and. Buy some vegetables, have a cup of coffee, have ice cream while you're doing it, you know, that that kind of thing, um. And, you know, I think it'd be a great use of the property, um. Anyway.
Clean it up.
Yeah, but but but.
Well, the same, the same can be said for what's going on down at River Bridge, because as you know. Still, not the years gone by and it's still an ugly, empty lot with an old, uh, liquor store on it, right?
Yeah, that would be a great spot for something like that.
Anything we could do to, yeah, move that forward.
No, I think that would be great, you know, and and the town wants commercial development, so something that was. A, uh, you know, in the fifties, we had Howard Johnson's when you just had to like stop in for, uh, for lunch, but.
For clam strips and an ice cream.
Yeah, 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 but but, you know, I mean, basically, you know, a vision that would say, okay, here you can get. Your your car charged, you can get a good cup of coffee, you can, you know, you can do X, Y, Z. And there's a place to walk your dog, et cetera, you know, I mean, that, I think that's the kind of thing that, um. We can look at it, and if these are, there are these funds available. Um, I think it would be a great Kickstarter for something like that, so I think, you know, we've got two properties at either end of town and.
Both the actual highway.
Yeah, and we.
And the the economics are kind of unknown at the moment, but you kind of figure. If we get anywhere near the new goals for electric vehicles, it's just going to be a disaster trying to get them all charged, so.
Well, and the idea is that if you get, if you get a charging station that's ahead of the game. And it is, has nice accommodations for that period of time. Um, you know, we can jump on it, but, um. We digress from the agenda, but I think it's a great plan. I think it's a great planning project for us over the next few months, yeah.
There's one other, um, significant factor in this thing, I mean, I realize it's kind of a long shot, but. One other significant thing is the fact that we do not currently have a policy for. Charging stations, you know, so we don't have a zoning bylaw. That addresses it, so that's an opportunity for us to come up with a plan, see what the townspeople, voters. Want to do and possibly, um, lay the groundwork for. Something that's kind of, it's gonna.
Yeah.
You're gonna refuse to get it. To make your stake your claim kind of, and then I think it's going to become a very, it's gonna become like gas stations, it's gonna be a national, but.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I think we can, um, we can do it in an overlay zone approach and, um. Let me say this is, it's issues like this that, uh. Motivated me to come back on the board, so. Yeah, I think it's great stuff.
It need to be like liquor licenses, an electric charging station license would be worth a million dollars.
Yeah. You can get loaded or you can get car.
Like this, Jay, a million dollars.
It could be like what I saw when I was in Louisiana, which is drive-through daiquiri bars.
Yes.
And ammo, I bet.
And ammo at all the gas stations, at a quickie mart, yeah, instead of a quickie mart, they have ammo shops.
Yeah.
Sorry for disrupting your agenda, Tom.
That's okay.
Oh, no, it's.
We needed to because we don't have good content for the next part.
That's fine.
No, it's great, thank you. No, and I think we should note this. Uh, Jay, in the notes, I actually didn't think you were attending and I was, I had a pad here and was ready to take notes, but. Please put this in the notes that we should look at this. And particularly those two sites and the available funding. As a project over the course of the next year, because I think it's it's. It's doable.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll pass along the word at CMR PC and see if I can get someone to help out with this as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, see if there's any DTLA money available.
Yeah, right, forgot of that.
I'll be first in line.
Tim's fault, he allocated all the money.
All right, cool. Anything else, Emily?
Nope.
Nope.
On my end, I'm out of here.
All right.
All right, I'll see you in, uh, about a month.
We will see you again, yes, indeed, right, thank you.
Good night.
So we're actually pretty much on schedule, Jay.
Wow.
Yep.
What a team, great planning and great execution of. Meeting management.
So the next thing on the agenda is fees, forms and updates, that the planning board needs to, uh. Take up and put into the, um, into our documents.
Well, make them available online.
Exactly.
It's actually been interesting because I've looked at, I don't know, let's see how many, three, six, seven different towns.
Mm-hmm.
One town had Cummings. Soon, I'm not sure when they posted that. One town just refused to tell you. But from one planning board site to the next, there's a large variety in what's presented and, uh. One actually liked, before we talk about fees. The Marlboro site. Has a page or pages to talk about, um, the significant projects that are going on in the town. So you know how like, seems like River Bridge kind of, there were, there was a group of people who understood what was going on down there and a large number of people that didn't. They didn't go to town meeting and whatever. So at Marlboro, they would have a whole section of a website that would talk about what the project's going to be and what's it look like and. How's the progress and all that, that was a great idea, I mean, it's a lot of work for a small town, but.
I was gonna say, that's a bit of work.
I was gonna say, are you volunteering to keep that updated?
Well, maybe, I don't know, it was inspirational. But, so, so I was looking at, um. Fees of as many towns as I could find around us that, uh, posted them. And I kind of ran out of town, actually here, can you let me show my screen? Carolyn?
I don't think I can give you permission because you're a panelist. You just have to turn your, you just have to share your screen.
Okay. See if I can figure it out, do that.
You have the tab open that you need open.
Yeah, right now I've only got one. Screen tonight, let's see, more, is this more, right? Share screen. This one. Do you see a couple charts?
Yep.
We do.
Well, on the left-hand side is the easy one, which is. If you apply for an A and R with one lot. This is what you pay in various towns.
Wow.
Now, I think we have the best planning board and the best town and we should be way up on the top, but we're way down on the bottom. So that would seem simple, we could pick a number, but then as you move on. To the subdivision plans, it gets confusing. Partly because, I mean, we we list. Like an assessor's fee and a application fee and, you know, it's it's a little bit complicated, other people have got. Uh, sometimes they're charging a certain amount per foot of roadway in a subdivision. Um, they all charge for amendments to plans, I'm not sure whether we do that or not, I don't think we do. The whole thing gets a little more complicated. So I'm kind of not ready to make a recommendation, the one recommendation I think I would make for the A and Rs though. Uh, I think we should be at around a hundred and fifty dollars because. I guess we probably don't want to be the highest, but I think. With, you, we're not going to update it very often. So we should be kind of leapfrogging and waiting for them to catch up or.
All right.
You don't want to just make small increases.
Yeah. May I, um. Because I know you're. Out of town and have other things you want to get on to, may I. Spare you preaching to the choir and suggest. A motion to increase. The A and R fee to a hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, do, well, we could do that or we could wait and get the whole. Thing updated.
We could do a second motion later when.
We could do that, yeah.
Yeah.
And we would be collecting an extra hundred bucks, I don't know how many times before we did that also, Thomas.
Uh, I will second Thomas's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So this would be, um, an A and R with one. Lot.
Right.
Yes.
The what happened with subsequent lots, right now it's twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, we would bring that up too, because I think it's more like fifty, but I, I just didn't have time to. Put that in my spreadsheet.
So you're you're.
All right, I will amend my motion to say that additional lot should be a hundred dollars.
So the initial lot's a hundred and fifty and then every additional lot is a hundred dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a timeline when this will take effect? Are we doing it coinciding with the start of the fiscal year or are we just doing it starting next week or?
I think effective with the vote.
Effective with the vote.
You just saw lots run from fifty to a hundred.
Yeah, so we're good with that.
Yeah, so a hundred fifty and then a hundred.
Yep. That, that's my amended motion.
Okay.
Hundred and fifty and a hundred, okay.
And then Caroline, what was you, you had started to say something, what was, uh?
Uh, I was just gonna say, if we made it effective. With the fiscal year, that gives us time to update the other fees as well. Between now and then, and then we could publish the whole thing all at once.
Uh, that's a good point, and do we have, I, the question I would ask is, do we have the ability to go out and say. To the town administration, we've increased this fee apart from. A, um, unintegrated. Fee schedule. I think we do.
It might, that might be, uh, we might. Upset some people by. Doing this without reviewing them like the select board, I mean, we have. Do we need permission?
All right, next fiscal year.
We better do, we should do some more homework, I agree, because the other thing is, if we're gonna change it, we should communicate it well, which we, you know, that's going to require some.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that, effective the next fiscal year, yes.
This coming fiscal year, so Ju- July one.
Yes.
Right, FY twenty-four.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, there's not that much of a gap anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I kind of like to publish that, um, you know, that flow chart I did for A and Rs and subdivision plans, I kind of like to publish that too, so people have. So it's clear what they need to do and what they have to supply us with and that kind of stuff.
Did we ever gain, gain access to our page on the town website?
Um. I think I did it one time, I think I had the credentials for that. Because I updated our blurb about the planning board, I remember. But I will, I can get that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it would, so then that way we can upload our. Any document, documents that we want to.
Right.
Um. But also by saying the fiscal year, it gives us a little bit of time, but it also puts a little fire in our belly about getting it done.
Yeah, which is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have a a motion and a second, and and an amended motion, so we're taking a vote on the amended motion. That the fee for A and Rs will go one hundred and fifty dollars for the first lot. A hundred dollars for every subsequent lot, effective the, uh, fiscal year FY twenty twenty-four. Of this year. Does that make sense to everybody?
That's what we thought, yep.
Then I will ask you to vote, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Great, thank you. And then we'll work on the rest of the stuff. Before now, before, um, July.
Yep.
Cool. Takes care of something else. All righty, is there? We're now into the timely items part of the. Meeting, is there anybody that has any items they would like to discuss? Anything ahead of town meeting that we should be doing?
I, I do think we discussed earlier on the support of the acquisition of the. Property in the center of time of town, and I would suggest that, uh. We huddle and be sure that, uh, we have our act together on that.
Okay. Well, I think we, oh, I don't know a hundred percent, I think the majority of the people on the board here support that. Acquisition.
Do you, dude, did anybody not?
But supported.
Yeah, so everybody supports it, I'm sure Tim.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're we're unanimous behind it, so if somebody asks us, the planning board, if we had a position, we can say we have a position and.
Yeah.
Support it. Support it.
And Carolyn, I, I, you know, I can touch base with you about. Things that you might want me to uh chip in on. As we discussed earlier, because I think this is, this is a great acquisition and we don't want to be ambushed on the town meeting floor.
Right, it's so funny because with the house, we did so much homework. About, for those, you know, questions, trying to think ahead and everything, and now that in we. It, I'm very glad Jay that you brought that up about the well.
Yeah.
We were definitely trying to think ahead and. Dot off our eyes.
Any, any possible input on the well is one of the things we need to huddle on.
Right.
I'm just saying, you know, we need to be sure we have our ducks in a row when that comes up.
Yep.
Hopefully, we won't need those ducks, but uh we need to have them.
Right, now my understanding is that there will be a projector set up. Um.
Yeah.
So instead of doing handouts with the map, I think Tim was thinking that we would. Um, just, did, just email. The um documents and that. The select board would. Put it in a form that was able to be shown. Um.
Well, we have, yeah, it should be this similar to, we have the map that's gonna be put up there, right?
We have the map, exactly, of the um properties.
That we're going to include in the arc, right.
Yep, I guess the other thing I was thinking that we might want to have is the proposed plan. From ten years ago.
Yeah, and, and, and possibly also um. The plan with well offsets. Superimposed on that, I, I don't know if that's possible between now and next Monday.
Right, what were you gonna say, Tom?
I said, just be careful, because if that plan wasn't approved, it was a preliminary. Proposal, and we want to make sure people were, are clear that it was preliminary proposal that the planning board didn't go and. Approve something and then somebody else could swoop in and have a ready-to-go shovel-ready. Subdivision if the town doesn't, you know, I don't want any confusion, I don't want somebody to say.
Right, no, that's a good point.
You guys.
I don't, yeah.
And then.
I think um, if it's possible. If it's possible. And I worry about preparing a slide at all, but if it's possible, I wouldn't want. To have it available unless we called upon it. My, my own sense is, it's probably better not to have a slide on there. But to be able to talk about it, but I defer to others' judgment on that.
I, I think it was not approved, uh especially or so long ago, I would stay away from it.
Yeah, and just have it, have it in the uh, in the quiver. In case somebody says, well, no, nobody could ever. Develop that.
Right, well, that's, that's exactly why, you know, because for us to just say, oh, well, there was a plan submitted. You know, it's this kind of nebulous, vague thing. But I agree about the complications about actually showing it also.
Yeah, so I think we should, I don't think we should have a slide on it. I think that um. If somebody says, well, nobody could ever do that, we could say, well. Actually, there was something that was like, you know, maybe eighty-five or ninety percent of the way there, that's already been proposed. And we should be prepared to speak about that orally rather than have a slide out there that would. Right, you know, give it more freedom than it deserves.
You could say that when we look at it. Currently, we think it's possible that this could happen.
Right. Or it's, yeah, yeah.
Every time, every time people say, oh, that can't be built on, I say, look at the Plastridge property.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, no.
You know, like. There, there are so many lots that people. More than once have said, oh, that can't be built on, that can't be built on, well.
No, I, I remember the Priest Road.
Statement into their mailboxes you go by.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, the, the Priest Road.
They were putting this here.
So far, I've, I've only seen one unbuilt lot. That a proposal has come forward, that it remains unbuilt.
Yeah. No, and I, I, I remember years ago the Priest Road thing and, and we had to, uh, I was on Concom at that point. And we had to look at uh. The ephemeral streams that were there. And I remember going up on a Saturday morning and it taking us literally four or five minutes to. Bushwhack our way over outcrops and. Very dense undergrowth. And you know what, they blasted all of that away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so I, the, are, the, that lot is unbuildable without. Actual determination of that. I just, I can't, personally, my personal experience is that you can't tell me it's unbuildable.
Oh, I, I firmly convinced, if the market conditions had been different. They would have gone through with that and we would have had a two lot subdivision, a three lot subdivision down there.
Right.
Yeah. Yep, so I think we have answers for that and um. I think we've rehearsed things. A lot and let's um. Without um. You know, with, with, with due attendance to the public meeting law. We know who we can reach out to on the town meeting floor in terms of this, we've, we've talked about it here tonight.
Right. Right, so Jay, yeah, if you could um. Do what you can to get someone out there to look at the well, the potential well situation. I think that is pretty important.
Yeah, give it a try.
Understanding that, that's a high level. You know, sort of the back of the envelope, uh. Assessment, and I think you can tell that we won't attribute it to them. But to say that we have spoken to people in the industry and it's not impossible.
Right.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue is getting the truck in, it's a big truck and it's fragile and.
Right, well, I mean, we intentionally made the easement wide enough. Um, and any. Path or anything that goes for, goes through there will keep in mind. Access for a piece of equipment.
Right, yep.
All right.
Before I forget, in the course of my research into fees, I discovered that Harvard, I think. Is a mini subdivision option. Ever hear of that?
No.
Nope.
What, what's the definition of a mini?
Well, it's. Two or three houses, it's a hammerhead, it's putting two or three houses into a hammerhead lot with a single driveway.
Why do they call it common driveway?
Common drive-in, and what's different about it than the normal subdivision is. Um. The, all the requirements for the roadway are way less.
Yes.
Stringent.
Yeah, we, we've done actually some similar things. Uh, up on Bald Hill Road, yeah, yeah.
Well, we did that on the property on Highland, but this is just a way of kind of getting it and writing and making it. By right, and, and the.
Yeah.
The justification for it is otherwise you would have. Three houses with separate driveways probably all clustered together. And it's messy and confusing and.
Been, been there. And gotten the T-shirt, um, even in my last planning board. Service, uh, I think something like that. Could be very useful as. Something that would be. Attendant to the production of affordable housing. And I'd be very much in favor of that, but not, not so much otherwise.
Like the cottage housing that we've.
Yes, exactly, that, 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 that sort of thing, so I think, again, we should keep that uh. In our parking lot, which is. I know is getting bigger than the parking lots we want to afford uh. Commercial uses, but uh, I think we should definitely put that in there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big priority for us necessarily, but I, it was just interesting to see it.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's great, and it, you know, it could be. Something that we use in the future as. An encouragement to affordable housing.
Yep.
So any other items, anything else we need to do, we all set, we're all set with our article. For uh town meeting, um.
Right, so what about the two roads that. Are on to be accepted, don't we have to? Give a recommendation, a vote?
There's no vote.
Okay.
I don't think, right, Thomas, there's no vote for road acceptance. It's just an article that goes before the town.
Yeah, I don't think planning, it's not the zoning bylaw, so there's no.
There was no.
Requirement for.
Go with it, right?
Uh, yeah, planning board vote, yeah.
Right, but no, right, and so, but we don't have to vote to recommend or not.
No, it, it would be if it was a zoning bylaw, but the acceptance of a road is not the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So why don't we do this, usually, we usually try to get to town meeting fifteen minutes before it really starts. In case we have to hold a planning board meeting. For anything, so.
Let's notice that, yes.
Jay, can you post a meeting for us? For Monday night?
Okay.
Yeah, and what time does town meeting start? I feel like it starts earlier than usual this year. Uh, let's see.
Well, that way if we get trapped and we need to have a vote, we can vote it right then and there.
No, that's fair enough, I like it. We always. Schedule the selectments meeting just before the annual meeting for the same purpose.
It means it's seven thirty is what I've got here.
Okay.
So seven fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the uh, at the school.
Right.
In the cafeteria. Which is my experience.
We'd need, we would need to have the agenda items by Friday at seven fifteen.
We'll just put timely items. I know they hate.
Yeah.
Just put timely items and it gives us some room.
Yeah, I think um, timely items and any other business and that, that should be fine.
Right, but specifically pertaining to town meeting.
No.
No, yeah, it would open ended.
Timely items, which is, which would be town meeting at that point if there isn't anything more timely.
Right.
Critical time. Crunch time.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I moved adjourned it. Nine P M.
Well, I'll second that, I started at six thirty in the morning today, so. I will second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adjourn and there's no discussion, so. That's what was pointed out before to me, so I'll just have to pick a vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye, aye, sir.
Tom Sanford, aye.